Good evening, I'd like to welcome you and call to order the September tenth Port Orchard City Council regular meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great to see so many people in the audience. I assume there's some chairs on the left side of the room, but the Austin Colbert Fan Session section over here, I think, is full. So we'll get started with our meeting. And first item is the approval of our agenda. Councilmember Kuchardi?
Yeah, I'd like to add a item G to our consent agenda tonight to excuse Councilmember Deener for personal reasons, and also to excuse Councilmember Ashby for personal reasons. There's a good chance that she will be here tonight, perhaps a little bit late.
Yep, and so then we'll acknowledge her attendance when she arrives. So is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
You have a second for the amendment and a discussion of adding that as consent agenda item G for the excusal of Councilmember Ashby and Deener. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that item has been added. Any other modifications to this evening's agenda?
Mayor, I'd move to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Any discussion of this evening's agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. We are to our first citizen comment period, and it is for items that are on this evening's agenda. And we have a second citizen comment period for items that are not on this evening's agenda. So with that, is there anyone wishing to address the council for items on the agenda?
On the procuring a lawyer for water rights, is that in regards to the water, to the pedestrian path?
It is not. So, Mr. Campbell? If you could identify yourself for the record, I know who you are, but other members of the public, you can move that microphone up.
Good evening, Council Mayor. I'm Eric Campbell of McCormick Communities, and I'm here quickly to speak tonight on the status of the progress we've made on with the city of Port Orchard and Birmingham, and hoping to lift that moratorium. First, I wanted to let everyone know that the staff has been working very hard. We really appreciate their transparency, and so far, and also that goes with the city of Birmingham. So a really quick update. First and foremost, our consultant BHC, which you'll see later, excuse me, our consultant HTR, along with BHC, has reached an agreement with the city of Birmingham to establish a pumping rate to lift the moratorium once the agreements are put in place. Secondly, is that part of that, we've been asked by the city of Birmingham to activate a well, which you will see in your packets, known as Well 1R. We are formalizing that agreement, putting together the necessary construction agreement and the bonding required for that. We are hopeful that will be some, you know, we're at one point thinking it was going to be 10 days from the date that we submitted our letter to you. Might be 14, we're getting close. Secondly, is that on just the status of our upgrades and our system improvements within the city of Port Orchard, we actually have pulled the permit, and we are actually starting to do work as we speak on the 580 water campus. That itself will allow us to prepare the site for the pilot well, and later, hopefully at the, you know, towards the first quarter of 2020, to start the reservoir itself. And lastly, as part also you'll see in your packet, we are also agreeing to do the water transmission line in conjunction with the 580 tank reservoir. And lastly, I would also like the council just to urge that part of your packet tonight is to go forward with the obtaining the water rights. For, once we establish the pilot well, you yourself will be able to determine how much will be able to, a water right will be able to be obtained, and enable you to get the necessary permitting. Once that permitting has been approved by the state, as long as Mark gives us a go-ahead, we'll be able to go forward and start that, the well, the well 12 immediately. Okay, that being said, guys, I also had one last outline for having all of this memorized. It's a good outline from Mrs. Robertson, and with that, we should hopefully have an agreement that we can be working, hopefully coming back in less than two weeks. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Campbell. Others wishing to address the council for items on the agenda this evening?
Is there, is there any item on the agenda regarding the pathway tonight?
There is not, sir. But there is a citizen comment period at the end of the agenda for items not on the agenda. Others wishing to address the council for items on the agenda this evening. With that, I will close the first citizen comment period, and we are to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
The second by Councilmember Kuchardi. Any discussion of the consent agenda items? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. We have, first, and at least in my administration, we have a oath of office that's going to be administered here this evening, so Chief Brown, I think you have the honors.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. I do want to acknowledge and thank you all for allowing us to do this. It's important to me personally and professionally, it's important to the officers that you see here that we do these things in public, and do them in front of council and the rest of the citizens that we serve. So we do have the honor of bringing a young man on tonight. But before I do that, I want to read the code of ethics for law enforcement, because I think it's important, again, that council hears that, that it goes on the record, and our community hears it as well, because this is what we live every day, and this is how we go out the door to serve. So as a law enforcement officer, my fundamental duty is to serve the community, to safeguard lives and property, to protect the innocent against deception, the weak against oppression or intimidation, and the peaceful against violence or disorder, and to respect the constitutional rights of all to liberty, equality, and justice. I will keep my private life unsullied as an example to all, and will behave in a manner which does not bring discredit to me or my agency. I will maintain courageous calm in the face of danger, scorn, or ridicule, develop self-restraint, be constantly mindful of the welfare of others. Honest in thought and deed in both my personal and official life, I will be exemplary in obeying the law of the land and the regulations of my department. Whatever I see or hear of a confidential nature, or that is confided to me in my official capacity, will be kept ever secret unless revelation is necessary in the performance of my duty. I will never act officiously or promote personal feelings, prejudices, political beliefs, aspirations, animosities, or friendships to influence my decisions. No compromise for crime, with relentless prosecution of criminals, I will enforce the law courteously and appropriately without fear or favor, malice or ill will, never employing unnecessary force or violence, and never accepting gratuities. I recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, and I accept it as a public trust to be held so long as I am true to the ethics of the police service. I will never engage in acts of bribery, nor will I condone such acts by other police officers. I will cooperate with all legally authorized agencies and their representatives in the pursuit of justice. I know that I alone am responsible for my own standard of professional performance, and will take every opportunity to enhance and improve my level of knowledge and competence. I will constantly strive to achieve these objectives and ideals, dedicating myself to my chosen profession, law enforcement. So if I could have Austin, if you could come up here, just so we can show off the newest member of our police department, I want to introduce him to the public, and of course, he's got tons of friends and family here as well. So if I get it wrong, you guys have to correct me. Austin Colbert was born in Kalispell, Montana, and moved to Gig Harbor when he was just two years old. He spent his formative years there with his parents, Doug and Joy, and his four siblings, Trenton, Skylar, Brandon, and Stephanie. Growing up, he enjoyed working on cars, playing sports, hiking in the woods, finding adventures, and just spending time with family and close friends. Austin met his wife, Kelsey, who's also here tonight several years ago while they both worked at Costco. After a brief courtship, they have married just this last August. Together, they enjoy traveling in each other's company, and probably, at least according to Austin, the best adventure so far has been parasailing in Hawaii. Is that true? Okay. Austin told me that he has always wanted to help people and to dedicate his life to service in his community. He initially began college with the intent to be a physical therapist, but that path didn't hold for long. And we are fortunate that Austin's path has led him to us, and we are excited to bring him onto our team. I've already had the pleasure of watching his dedication and drive to succeed. While he awaits his academy date, Austin has already been hard at work learning about our agency, our teammates, and law enforcement in our region. I look forward to seeing you progress through the academy and the PT test, which is the 25th. So anybody wants to go watch that, they can. I really truly believe that you're going to be a fantastic asset to the city and our team, and thank you for coming to serve with us. So I am going to ask Kelsey to come up and help me while I give you your oath. So go ahead and raise your right hand for me, and state after me. Aye?
Aye.
State your name.
Austin Blake Colbert.
I have been duly appointed as a police officer for the city of Port Orchard, Washington.
Having been duly appointed as a police officer for the city of Port Orchard, Washington, do solemnly swear Do solemnly swear That I will faithfully and impartially That I will faithfully and impartially
Perform the duties of my appointment
Perform the duties of my appointment
As prescribed by law
As prescribed by law
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability
And that I will support and enforce
And that I will support and enforce
The ordinances of the city of Port Orchard
The ordinances of the city of Port Orchard
The laws and the constitution of the state of Washington
The laws and the constitution of the state of Washington
And the constitution of the United States of America
And the constitution of the United States of America.
Ma'am, if you would do the honors. Mayor and council, with your permission, we're going to retire out and have a small reception. Thank you all.
Thank you for sharing.
You can have them go to the reception.
Yeah, we're going to give them a moment to exit the room. I'd like to acknowledge a couple special guests tonight, though. We have Jackie Brown, our utility manager in the audience, since we're talking about some utility items, and then Tony Lang, who has been our longtime Public Works employee, Public Works foreman, and was recently promoted to our Public Works manager. And Tony, you want to step out here and show us your fancy shoes and your, Tony's got shiny shoes. I've never seen Tony in shiny shoes before. So congratulations on your promotion, Tony. Well deserved.
You're welcome.
And just acknowledge, Beck Ashby's joined us this evening. Sorry you missed that ceremony, it was wonderful.
I am too.
And if the last, you have, perfect, the last one out wants to close that door so they can have their fun out there. All right, we're to our business items. All right, the first is adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 2.08, appointive officers and creating a new chapter, 2.82, amending abatement hearings officer. Mr. Price, I hear you're pitch hitting for Mr. Bond this evening.
Yes, I am, members of the council. In Chapter 20.212, Dangerous and Unfit Dwellings, Buildings, and Structures, the Board of Building Appeals was designated as the appeal body for appeals of, for administrative level appeals of abatement orders. In starting to implement that, we realized that that really wasn't the best fit. The Board of Building Appeals is a body designated by the building code. It's a group of local industry professionals who serve on a volunteer basis, and their intent under the building code is to evaluate alternative building methods and materials, and to hear appeals related to denials of building permits. Whereas dangerous building abatements really have very little to do with interpretation of the building code. They have much more to do with abandoned, neglected buildings, work done in a substandard manner without permits, buildings occupied by vagrants, and attracting crime and that kind of thing. And so we realized this really wasn't the appropriate use of the Board of Building Appeals. Our alternative to that was the hearing examiner. And hearing examiner, those hearings can cost several thousand dollars, and that's a cost that cannot be passed on to the person, to the appellant in an abatement situation, because in the interest of due process, if the government is saying, we're going to come in and tear your house down, and your recourse is to spend thousands of dollars appealing that, that's not fair due process. So we had to look for another way to approach this, and we looked toward our municipal court judge to see if there was some way to put this together with that role. And out of that, that process, we came up with an abatement hearing officer, which would be a local attorney or judge who would serve in that capacity under a separate contract, and at a much lower cost to the city and to the appellant. And so to do that, that required some changes to the municipal code, the first being Chapter 2.08, which is the administrative, or the, excuse me, the appointive officers of the city. And so before you is an added section, would be a new section added to 2.08, specific to that position, or two new sections, one describing the position and the other related to compensation. And there's also with that, we recognized a minor error in the hearing examiner section as well, related to the job description. So there's proposed some additional language to clarify the source of the job description for the hearing examiner as well. And then with that is a new Chapter 2.82, Abatement Hearing Officer, which is the chapter that would spell out the powers and duties of the abatement hearing officer. And that's what's before you in the first ordinance.
So I think staff's recommendation is for us, for the city council, to adopt the proposed ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapters 2.08, Appointive Officers and Creating a New Chapters, 2.82, Abatement Hearing Officer.
Yes, I move to adopt an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 2.08, and creating a new Chapter 2.82 as presented.
Second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. And in addition, so we have these two items tonight. I've been working with Sharon on a contract amendment for our judge, and it is intended, at least in the interim, we are actually going forward that it will be our judge, but that's not, these aren't duties that are captured in his current contract. When you see that contract, I'm proposing that he's going to need to create forms and set up a process, so we're proposing we're going to pay him $500 to do that. And then we have one of these hearings roughly every three years or so, and we compensate the judge additionally at $500 each time he does one of these hearings. It's probably an hour long, but he's got homework to do ahead of time, and then he's got to write an opinion at the end, so it's not just the time that you're in the courtroom. So, but that will be coming back to you hopefully in two weeks, so that we have this process buttoned up. So with that, any other questions about?
Mayor, with the noise outside, can I have you guys to speak a little bit closer to the microphone, and maybe just a little bit louder, just with the noise in the back? I think that would help the people in the audience here a little bit better tonight.
Thank you.
Perfect, yes. So with that, any other questions?
No, but I think it's an important comment, that tonight's action is not approving any sort of a contract or compensation that will be forthcoming.
Yes, this is just adopting the code that will create the foundation and structure for this.
And there are times then we can actually recapture those funds.
There's going to be, I think it's 100 or 100, Doug, what is the cost going to be for that?
We're feeling that $100 appeal fee would be a fair appeal fee with the caveat that of a fee waiver for low income, there's something that's already in our, in the fee schedule under another fee that we would like to model after, so that people who are truly, do not have the means, would be, could be exempt from that $100 appeal fee as well.
So we're trying to cover some of our costs, but not all of our costs.
If we needed to put a lien on a property, would the full cost be recaptured, or only the $100 fee?
We'd still be looking at that, but my feeling is it would not, because again, that would be kind of the same thing, you're still charging that person that money, you're just doing it on the back end instead of the front end. But again, we're also talking about an average of maybe one or two appeals a year, and we've gone three years, and we, this is our first appeal that's coming up, and so we're talking a fairly minimal amount of money that is already budgeted for in the abatement funds.
And I, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, but the, our code, updated code that we passed a couple of years ago does allow us, if we go tear a building down and incur costs associated with that abatement, we can lien the property.
Yes, for all of those costs, it's just a question of whether we would seek to recover that extra $400, and we need to talk about that, but my feeling is that we would eat that $400.
Mr. Rosa Pepe?
Not that this would ever happen, but in case the judge had to recluse himself, who would be the pro temp hearing officer?
We would reach, well, as the code, we'd reach out to another judge or attorney.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, I was curious.
And we have discussed that with him, and so what we, the way we have it set is we would seek a recommendation from the judge as someone, as a pro temp, but ultimately the mayor would then have to, it would be a similar contract.
We're just a small community and one judge, that's why I was asking.
Yes.
Sure. Thank you.
Fair question. Other questions or concerns? Okay, you'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 2.08, Appointive Officers, and creating a new Chapter 2.82, Abatement Hearing Officer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to item B, Adoption of an Ordinance Amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 20.212, Dangerous and Unfit Dwellings, Buildings, Structures. Mr. Price?
And so this is the companion to what you've just considered, and so I won't go back through all of the explanation again, but I would like to point out a couple of things. The first being a minor discrepancy between the clean version in the ordinance and the attached red line version that I discovered yesterday. There was a minor change that didn't make it into the ordinance form that's attached, but it is before you in the red line, and that is that what had been Section 20.212.090, in looking at that, that really covered two topics, and so I broke out the first chap, the first paragraph of that section into its own, left that as Section 090, and created a new Section 20.212.100 that picks up the rest of that section, and just makes it clear, adds a paragraph explaining that that's related to requests for reconsideration, modification, or extension. And that's the other thing I would point out regarding the, this proposed ordinance, is that this does make the necessary changes to replace Building Board of Appeals with Abatement Hearing Officer, but it also goes through and clears up some confusion between what was previously termed officer, which is the Community Development Director, who holds the initial abatement hearing, the initial complaint hearing, which is the step before an appeal, that's the step from which an abatement order is issued. So we changed that term back to Community Development Director. And then just some other changes that clear up some of the language related to appeals and related to emergency measures, what provisions are stayed during an appeal, so that the abatement order is stayed, but emergency actions are not on appeal. So those are the other changes that are included within this proposed ordinance, is just to clean up the language and make it easier to follow, make it flow a little more logically. And again, staff recommends that the council adopt this ordinance.
I move to adopt an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 20.212 as presented.
Second, Councilmember Kuchardi seconded that motion. Are there any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Ashby?
Yes, Sharon, can we assume that the city attorney has reviewed both the red line and the?
The official final version that goes to the packet? Yes, that's true.
Okay, hearing none. You'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapters 20.212, Dangerous and Unfit Dwellings, Buildings, and Structures. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to item C, Adoption of a Resolution Approving a Contract with Robinson Noble, Inc. for the 2019-2020 ESSB 6091 Foster Pilot Project Services and Documenting Procurement Procedures. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, your honor, councilmembers. The city of Port Orchard continues to grow, and much of its aging water infrastructure, water system infrastructure needs to be upgraded or replaced to provide safe and adequate water supply to both new and existing customers. Draft water system demand projections by BHC consultants demonstrate the need for additional instantaneous water rights by 2029, and additional annual water right potentially as early as 2047. Due to the complexity of groundwater applications and legal standards requiring perfect mitigation of impacts to rivers and streams, the city retained Robinson Noble and the law offices of Thomas Pors in 2016 to prepare appropriate water rights applications to achieve new water source approvals in time to meet these future demands. After filing these applications and beginning the process of planning a comprehensive mitigation strategy for them, the state legislature adopted ESSB 6091, the Foster Pilot Project Process, that fortunately included a pilot project designed for the city of Port Orchard. On the recommendation of Mr. Pors and the city's lobbyists, the city of Port Orchard accepted this pilot project opportunity, and so notified the Department of Ecology in February of 2018. Since then, Ecology has issued guidance concerning the investigation and findings required to meet the Foster Pilot Project legal standards, including how to demonstrate that replacement water is not reasonably available, and that net environmental benefits are achieved by out-of-kind mitigation. The new consultant scope of work and budgets presented this evening for both contracts C052 and C05319 are designed to comply with this new guidance and achieve a positive outcome for the city's pilot project applications. This in turn is the best available opportunity for the city of Port Orchard to obtain additional water rights, to authorize new wells 12 and 13, and to meet its future growth demands. The budget includes modeling impacts to regulated streams in Kitsap County from projected groundwater production, efforts to identify existing water rights for mitigation purposes, and to minimize stream flow impacts through replacement water or stream flow augmentation, and the design and evaluation of habitat enhancement projects, particularly within the Blackjack Creek Basin. The workload is extensive, because that is what is necessary to obtain final approval from the Department of Ecology, which is on record as being conservative about approving these applications and avoiding litigation from potential opponents. The budgets include extensive consultations and meetings with local tribes, state, fish and wildlife, and ecology officials in order to prevent opposition to, and to achieve a positive outcome for the city. Therefore, on July 26, 2019, the city's Public Works Department published a request for qualifications for ESSB 6091 Foster Pilot Project Stream Augmentation Restoration, Net Ecological Benefits, and Hydrogeological Services. By the August 9, 2019 deadline, one statement of qualification was received. On August 13, 2019, upon review of the statement of qualification, the city selected Robinson Noble for the project. On August 14, 2019, public On August 14, 2019, public works staff then completed the mandatory bidder responsibility and received viable scope, timeline, and proposed budget proposal from Robinson Noble in an amount not to exceed $324,900. Staff recommends adoption of, of a resolution thereby approving a contract with Robinson Noble for the 2019-2020 ESSB 6091 Foster Pilot Project Stream Flow Augmentation Restoration Net Ecological Benefits and Hydrogeological Services in an amount not to exceed $324,900, and documenting the professional services procurement procedures. And with fiscal impact, this current, is currently unfunded, and, and this is as a result of the Foster Pilot Project, and some of this workload was shifted by the departure of the previous utility manager. A budget amendment for both 2019 and 2020 will be required, and I did speak to the finance director, I think yesterday, we're looking at funding, ways to fund this. So I think Director Crocker could have more information if you need it.
Yeah, I'll just make a brief comment. So we looked at all of the items on the Janeday, Item C, D, E, F, and G, and we found funding sources for all these amendments and approvals. Now again, we will bring these forth in a, a, a public process in the budget amendment process when we do the mid-year review, but that this time, because we're on a biennial budget, we have expenditure authority to go forward with the contracts, and we'll do cleanup work in our mid-year review cycle to actually allocate the cash for this funding.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to adopt a resolution thereby approving a contract with Robinson Noble, Inc., for the 2019-2020 ESSB 6091 Foster Pilot Project Stream Flow Augmentation Restoration Net Ecological Benefits and Hydrogeological Services in an amount not to exceed $324,900.
Second? Second by Councilmember Pichardi. It's important to remember, we're, we've got one well under, we're fortunate to be, we're one of five or six communities, Jackie, is it five? Five communities in the entire state that is participating in this. Because of some litigation that's out there, nobody's wells are being approved through off-site mitigation, and so it's imperative that we participate in this program, because we have one well being drilled, and I hope very shortly we have another one in the McCormick area being drilled. In the last few years, we've purchased upwards to $300,000 worth of water from the city of Bremerton, because we don't have sufficient source for our city. So this, this, this item and, and the item E that we're gonna pass, hopefully pass tonight, are imperative for us to bring those wells and transfer water rights and bring those wells online. So, other questions or, or comments?
You know, my question, because we only had the one response to our request, and we've worked with Robinson Noble in the past, you have complete confidence in their work and are very comfortable with the contract.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, the reality of it is, is if we were able to just extend their contracts, because they were already working on this, we would have done that. We did have to go through a procurement process, and we did have to send out advertisements, but at the end of the day, you know, the responses were minimal, and we were able to show that they were the most qualified to move forward.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, with that, you'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Robinson Nobles, Inc., for the 2019-2020 ESSB 6091 Foster Pilot Project Services and Documenting Procurement Procedures. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to 7D, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Ventilation Power Cleaning, Inc., for the 2019 Stormwater Catch Basin and Pipe Maintenance. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you. On July 31, 2019, the city established a list of qualified contractors from the 2019 MRSC Small Works roster, and that's attached. For main category, storm drainage facility construction repair and maintenance, and subcategory, catch basin cleaning, factoring, jet rotting, and jet rotting to perform this year's annual stormwater catch basin and pipe maintenance requirement. On July 31, 2019, pursuant to Resolution 009-15, specifically Section 4, limited public works process, the city's Public Works Department emailed a request for proposal for the 2019 catch basing and pipe maintenance for all the MRSC Small Works roster contractors. Four bids were received, those bids included tax and labor and equipment, were received prior to the August 14, 2019 proposal deadline. The lowest, those ranged from 113,900 down to 81,324. On August 19, 2019, the city's Public Works Department staff completed the MRSC mandatory, mandatory bidder responsibility checklist and determined that ventilation power cleaning bid of $81,325 was the lowest qualified bid. The Public Works Department has confirmed that the bidding requirements for the public works, for public work, public work has been followed. Please note the number of city-owned catch basins and stormwater pipes that require maintenance has increased significantly in recent years, with the increase, increases due to annexations, private development, and significant improvements to the city's mapping and inventory program, which has identified several catch basins that were previously not listed in the city inventory. So this budget item will continue to increase over the years. Recommendations, staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution, Resolution 026-19, thereby approving contract C06219 with Ventilation Power Cleaning for the 2019 Stormwater Catch Basin and Pipe Maintenance Contract in an amount not to exceed $81,325, with the term beginning September 11, which is tomorrow, and ending December 31, 2019. And again, we only budgeted $50,000 in, for each year, but we've exceeded that, and I believe Director Crocker actually already responded to that.
Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution thereby approving a contract with Ventilation Power Cleaning, Inc., for the 2019 Stormwater Catch Basin and Pipe Maintenance Contract in the amount not to exceed $81,325.
Second? Second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Have any additional questions or comments?
Just have a question, when you say significantly increased, I was just curious what that meant, you know, 25%? You know, I, I know we've, you know?
Well, we have, we have quite a bit of development out at McCormick.
Right.
Which with each development comes roads and storm, collection and conveyance, the ponds are maintained by the applicant, or the proponent. Tremont had a huge addition, now those were cleaned this year as part of the project closeout, but, you know, that's a, two massive vaults in the collection and conveyance system that we'll have to maintain in the future. So it's just, as the city grows, both commercially and residentially, we're just gonna add. And again, we've also, every time we've gone out with our equipment and factoring, we always seem to find one or two that we never knew were there before. So they've been paved over, or there's some oddities with how they were constructed, and nobody would have thought that there would be one where it was, but, so we're getting better with our GIS platform as well, so significant, I, I don't think I can put a number to it.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, will you be voting on adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Ventilation Power, Inc., Cleaning, Inc., for the 2019 Stormwater Catch Basin and Pipe Maintenance? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7E, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with the Law Office of Thomas M. Pors for the 2019-2020 Water Rights Legal Services. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you. As a continuation of the water rights, legal services first initiated in 2016 for well 10, and subsequent to the legislative actions associated with the Foster Pilot Project, in which the city's well 13 project was included as a participant, and all the other cities' existing sources are included. The need for water rights legal services when the city of Port Orchard's retail water service area has never been urgently needed. Therefore, on July 18, 2019, the Public Works Department selected three qualified legal firms from the current MRSC Professional Services roster, main category, Legal Services, and subcategory, Land Use. Upon the review and scoring of each of the firm's statement qualifications, the city's Public Works Department selected the Law Office of Thomas M. Pors as being the most qualified professional services firm. Therefore, on July 23, 2019, the city did receive a satisfactory scope and budget proposal, and on August 7, 2019, the city verified that the Law Office of Thomas Pors was favorably listed on the Systems for Award Management. The proposal received from the Law Office of Thomas Pors for the required 2019 and 2020 water rights related activities is in the amount not to exceed $137,500. This does include a $27,500 management reserve contingent that won't be released unless agreed upon in the future. So recommendations, staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution 021-19, thereby approving contract C05219 with the Law Office of Thomas M. Pors in the amount not to exceed $137,500 for the 2019-2020 Water Rights Related Activities and documenting the professional services procurement procedures pursuant to RCW 39.80.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to adopt a resolution thereby approving a contract with the Law Office of Thomas M. Pors in the amount not to exceed $137,500 for the 2019-2020 Water Rights Related Activities.
Second by Councilmember Ashby. Questions for Mr. Dorsey on this? So this is the attorney that's doing the work related to the, the water rights.
And this is covering all the wells in the city?
Again, just how lucky we are to be a part of the Foster Pilot Program and having these conversations.
Yes. Okay, with that, you'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution approving a contract with the Law Office of Thomas Pors for the 2019-2020 Water Rights Legal Services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved. We are to 7F, adoption of a resolution approving, approving the purchase of vehicles for the Equipment Revolving Fund. Mr. Crocker?
Thank you, mayor, councilmembers. Business item 7F is a resolution approving the purchase of vehicles for the ERR Fund. The city council adopted a biennial budget, which included $1,226,000 for the purchase of vehicles for the Equipment Rental and Revolving Fund. The city's procurement procedures and policies require the city council approval for purchases costing $35,000 or more. The vehicles listed in the proposed resolution are within the limits of the biennial budget and meet the city's fleet standardization policies. The proposed resolution is to provide the city council's approval of the vehicle purchases in accordance with our procurement procedures as established by council. Staff would recommend approving the resolution as proposed.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
I move to adopt a resolution providing city council approval of the purchase of vehicles in accordance with the city's fleet standardization policies and the 2019-2020 biennial budget.
Second?
Second by Councilmember Ashby. You can see farther down in the documents, it's two very significant pieces of equipment totaling $600 and almost $70,000. One is a new vector truck for the city, and the second is a new piece of equipment. We've already hired the employee, the TV operator, that, because we have a requirement, we've been TV'ing our sewer lines, and now we have a requirement to TV our stormwater lines, and we historically have contracted that out, and with the additional number of feet of pipe that we have to TV, that it was more, definitely more cost-effective to buy our own piece of equipment and employ somebody to do that work for the city. So that's, those are the two pieces of equipment. Other questions on these purchases? Hearing none. You'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution approving the purchase of vehicles for the Equipment Revolving Fund. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7G, approval of Amendment Number 1 to Contract Number 052-18 with Northwest Urban Law, PLLC, for special projects and land use attorney services. Clerk Reiterson?
Yes, good evening, mayor, council. On June 26, 2018, council approved a contract with Northwest Urban Law, PLLC. The agreement is for special projects and land use related attorney services. At the August 13, 2019 city council meeting, the mayor brought it to the council's attention that in reviewing the contract and the amount of legal services still needed, he's asking the contract be amended to adjust the compensation portion of the agreement. The amendment is to increase the maximum amount of compensation from $60,000 to $100,000, with all the other terms and conditions of the original contract remain in place. Staff recommends the approval of the amendment as presented, and as far as the fiscal impact, it is within the 2019 city's budget.
Councilmember Ashby?
Yes, I move to approve Amendment Number 1 to Contract Number 052-18 with Northwest Urban Law, PLLC, for special projects and land use attorney services as presented.
Second?
Second, and as we are all aware, Jennifer Robertson of Northwest Urban Law is our land use attorney, and she has been very busy this year with the issues out related to McCormick Woods, and has been a very integral part of these negotiations that we've been doing with them, and we were nearing the end of, or the top end of her contract amount, and we're not done with those negotiations, so we felt it was important to get this before you, so we can continue to help her, help us solve these problems.
And just one point of clarification, that the term doesn't change, and this, this contract would still expire December 31 of 19, it appears?
That's true. So we'll likely be bringing back, retaining her for another year in the future, yeah. You're correct. But it is just increasing the dollar amount at this time. Other questions? Okay, you'd be voting on approval of a resolution, approving of Amendment Number 1 to Contract Number 052-18 with Northwest Urban Law, PLLC, for special projects and land use attorney services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We are to 7H, approval of Amendment Number 2 to Contract Number 29-11 with Key Bank National Association for the lease right of way adjacent to 1301 Bay Street. Clerk Reiterson?
So staff was contacted by a representative from Key Bank, asking that the city continue leasing the right of way with Key Bank. The right of way is adjacent to Key Bank off of Bay Street and is for approximately 8,250 square feet, which includes a few parking stalls and access to a small portion of their drive-through. The current lease is set to expire September 30, 2021, exhausting its third renewal term initiated in 2006. The yearly lease is about 3,000, the yearly lease amount is $3,000. Key Bank's representatives stated that they know it is early to ask for the renewal, but they are in a position that requires from their building owner to put in a two-year notice should they no longer wish to lease the building. The initial ask was for the city to entertain a continual lease for an additional five years with three five-year options for renewal. Since it has been a while for an appraisal that was done, the city was able to use a comparable appraisal that was done in 2016 for the Bruce Titus lease. Legal counsel agreed that it was comparable and current enough appraisal that the city could use the square footage rate and apply it to the current Key Bank lease. Staff presented this item to the July 20, the July 1 and the August 26, 1st Land Use Committee meetings, and the followings were discussed. How much the leased property is actually needed, meaning looking at the map, it appears that the city's leasing not only a few parking stalls and an entrance to the drive-through, but also a portion of the traveled area from the park. It may be better served as having an easement for the traveled area and only lease the stalls and the entrance to the drive-through area. In that response, Key Bank stated that they would like to keep all the area as they proposed and no change to the current lease. In addition, the clerk responded that Section 5 of the current agreement states that the city reserves the right to modify the lease at any time, to remove a portion of the lease adjacent to Blackjack Creek for the park purposes, and should it not, and should it not interfere with the bank's right to vehicular and pedestrian ingress and egress from the bank's owned property, and in Section 12, it states that the lease is for pedestrian and vehicle ingress and egress and parking. The other item that was brought up the Land Use Committee was how much of the parking is being used, and, and they are, so how much of the parking is being used, and are they full at all times, or should that amount be reduced? Again, Keys Bank's response was that they would like to keep the area as is, as proposed, with no changes to the leased area. with no changes to the leased area. Another item that was brought up is that there's been some changes in the Subdivision Act, and does this apply with that? In speaking to legal counsel, it appears that this is a different type of property. It is a lease of right-of-way and not a fee simple property, so that does not apply. Another item was, should we use the street use permit rather than an actual lease? In speaking with legal counsel, it is up to the city as to how they feel that if the property should be unleased with short notice or have long-term. Key Bank stated that they would prefer to have a long-term lease to secure that they would not have, to vacate the premises and disrupt their customer service. In speaking with the Land Use Committee, they were not in favor of a 20-year lease, meaning a five-year lease with three five-year options of renewal. The committee supported two five-year lease options. Key Bank agreed to that. And lastly, the committee was not in favor of a fixed lease. However, they supported an annual increase of 2%, which would be about $100 to $200 a year, or possibly applying an increase every five years, which would be approximately 10% every five years, increase 400 to 500. Key Bank understood that. So, with that, staff recommends the amendment of number two as presented.
Councilmember Chardy?
Yeah, I move to approve amendment number two to contract number 029-11 with Key Bank National Association to lease city right-of-way adjacent to 1301 Bay Street as presented.
Second? Motion and a second. Questions?
I'd just like to thank city staff for taking the recommendations from the Land Use Committee forward and making those amendments to the agreement. That's exactly what was asked.
And I did fail to mention for the record that as of the most recent appraisal for the square footage rate currently, the lease is $3,000. When the current lease expires in 2021, the new rate will be $5,100 annually, so it is an increase to the city's fiscal impact.
Questions for Clerk Reinsen? Hearing none. You'll be voting on the approval of amendment number two to contract number 29-11 with Key Bank National Association to lease right-of-way adjacent to 1301 Bay Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to item 7I, approval of a special events application with Kitsap County Sheriff's Office for an open house. Clerk Reinsen?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, council. So, Kitsap, a representative with Kitsap County Sheriff's Office submitted an application for an open house to be held Saturday, September 14th. The event will be open to the public from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., with setup starting at 9:00 a.m. and teardown to be completed by 6:00 p.m. They are requesting a street closure of Division Street from Austin to Klein. The Kitsap County Sheriff's Office Open House proposes us to meet sheriff's patrol deputies, detectives, correction officers, support service specialists, and citizen patrol volunteers. Opportunity to walk through the sheriff's workspaces and the Kitsap County Jail with guided tours with view static displays of equipment, vehicles, and demonstrations. They are anticipating 300 visitors to attend. Pursuant to Port Orchard Municipal Code 5.94.050, subsection four, requires council approval of an event with street or highway closures that are not exempt outlined in Resolution 24-17. This event falls within that council's policy on street or highway closures. Staff does not have the approval administratively to approve this item, therefore it is being presented to the council. City Departments, South Kitsap Fire and Rescue, and Kitsap Transit have reviewed the application and have submitted their recommendations and or comments, which have been provided to you, and all those comments are in support of this road closure. Staff recommends that if the council finds that the event will not seriously inconvenience or impair the general public's use of the public property, services, or facilities, then staff recommends approving the special event application as presented.
Councilmember Rose Pepe?
I move to approve the special event application for Kitsap County Sheriff's Office to hold their event and allow for street closure as presented.
Second by Councilmember Lucarelli. Any questions or concerns for Clerk Reinsen?
And just to clarify, the code requires an order for staff to approve it administratively. You have to submit it within 30 to 90 days, and we submitted it less, it was received into our office less than 30 days, and that's why it's here before you tonight.
All right. With that, you'll be voting on the approval of a special events application for the Kitsap County Sheriff's Office Open House. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to item 7J, approval of the August 13th, 2019 council meeting minutes. Councilmember Chang?
I move approval of the August 13th regular council meeting minutes.
Second? Motion and a second to approve the August 13th council meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes have been approved. We are to 7K, approval of the August 20 council meeting minutes. Is there a motion? Councilmember Chang, go ahead.
I move that we approve the council meeting minutes of August 20th.
Second? And there's a second, and on the dais before you is a revised text for those minutes. Councilmember Ashby caught a mistake in them, and we've corrected those in the minutes. With that, you'll be voting on the August 20th council meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to our discussion items for this evening, we have three of them. The first is an update on the water system improvements and agreements for the 580 Zone, which is what Mr. Campbell was here speaking to you earlier this evening. I've got three documents that are in your packet. I just, I guess I'll read the staff report. The city is making progress in negotiations with McCormick Communities, the city of Bremerton, and the South Kitsap Fire and Rescue in an effort to make it possible to lift the building permit moratorium for the 580 and 660 Zones. On August 13th, 2019, the city of Port Orchard made a formal request to the city of Bremerton seeking an increase in the water supply from 350 gallons a minute to 792 gallons per minute. On August 29th, 2019, the city of Port Orchard received a response from the city of Bremerton which indicated they could support a temporary increase in water supply to Port Orchard under certain conditions. On September 3rd, 2019, McCormick Communities provided a letter to the city of Port Orchard which indicated they were willing to make certain improvements to both the city of Port Orchard and the city of Bremerton water systems, and to seek to have the moratorium lifted. So, all three of those letters are in your packet this evening, and for your review. I've also, we're, you know, I know that the city of McCormick Communities is in negotiations with Bremerton for those improvements that will provide the additional source. We're in negotiations with Bremerton for the source that those improvements will provide. We're also in negotiations, and we just today got a very detailed response out to their attorney for the improvements that are outlined in that letter, and this evening I had a phone conversation with Chief Wright, and he acknowledges they have our request from them, and they will get us a response no later than the end of next week. So, there's a lot of moving parts going on here. I'm very encouraged with the process, or the progress we've made in the last few weeks, and I'm hopeful we're talking about this again in two weeks. It would be my goal. So, that, any questions of me or staff on where we're at and what we're trying to get done? And the beauty of these improvements that the developers willing to make is they're going to make those improvements, and they're going to be repaid, we hope, primarily through latecomers agreements or the existing agreement that we have with them for reimbursement. So, we, that's, our plan is to hopefully put some modifications to that agreement and move forward with that. That'd be a much faster path to lift the moratorium and then come back later for that global agreement that we've previously discussed. So, address the water, then come back with the global agreement that addresses the transportation improvements, investing rights, and so on and so forth, so.
But just to be clear, we're not lifting the moratorium until we have agreements in place.
Yes, until we have agreements in place, we don't have the water to provide. So, Bremerton needs to agree to provide that water. We need certain improvements committed to and bonded per Bremerton's requirements and the fire district's requirements, and I haven't heard any indication that unwilling, any unwillingness to do, take any of those steps. So, it's just dotting the i's and crossing the t's, I hope. So, Councilmember Rose Pepe?
I probably just missed it in reading the letters, but, you know, primarily the focus is on 580, which is McCormick, but this would also clear for 660 also, correct?
And really, 660 is primarily McCormick West.
Right.
And there isn't any building activity in that area, so that will likely be part of that global agreement. The pressing need is the 580 Zone and where the building activity is happening today. And so, that, it's purposeful that 660 isn't in the discussions that we're having at this time.
So, that is not, we don't have to worry about that one right now, today.
Today, today.
Okay, thank you.
But it is going to be part of the global agreement and future, and because there is platted lots in that area, too. There just isn't any building activity at this time. Councilmember Lucarelli?
I'm very encouraged by what we see here tonight, and this was a very difficult situation and a very pressing one, and I look forward to continued resolution, but this is looking amazing. So, thank you for all of your hard work.
Yeah, and our thanks to the city of Bremerton and to the fire district as well. It takes multiple agencies to get this across the finish line, so it's great to see everyone working together.
It's not good for anybody. Okay. Any other questions on this matter? Okay, so we've got some videos that Economic Development Committee has been working on, and I've seen them, I'm very happy with them. So, we're going to play these three videos, and hopefully you like them as much as I do, and we'll get them up on our website and Kita's website. So, there's three, and let them play.
If you have a business, come join us in Port Orchard. Conveniently located in the heart of Puget Sound on the Kitsap Peninsula between Seattle and the Olympics.
Brandy, can you put, can you put your mic?
It's right here in the middle of everything. We're probably 15 minutes away from Tacoma, a ferry ride to Seattle. Port Orchard is wide open. There's a lot of business opportunities, some of the most affordable retail spaces available here in Port Orchard, it's the county seat, but right now, this is a great place to start a business.
Westside access with space to grow, and a city proactively developing business opportunity zone and friendly incentives, and a thriving business park eager to help you grow. High-tech software and manufacturing are growing in Port Orchard, and educated workforce along with a life and family balance make Port Orchard a great place for your business. Services and tourism opportunities abound, and roads and infrastructure continue to enhance transportation and communications. Port Orchard business environment is growing. Service organizations that help to network and grow your relationships. So, come join us in Port Orchard for a welcoming business environment. There's something for everyone.
Nestled between Seattle and the Olympics, Port Orchard is located in the heart of Puget Sound, an ideal year-round destination, where you can join us for paddling on our nationally recognized water trail. Join us for a round of. Nestled between Seattle and the Olympics, Port Orchard is located in the heart of Puget Sound, an ideal year-round destination, where you can join us for paddling on our nationally recognized water trail. Join us for a round of golf at one of the local golf courses. Join us for a round of cold ones. Join us in one of our eclectic boutiques and collectible shops. Join us for one of our dining experiences. You might get here by boat or by car, but either way, you'll want to make time for a stroll or bike ride down the Bay Street pedestrian path, where you'll be treated to amazing views of the Olympics and Sinclair Island. Port Orchard is for families, and it's the perfect spot for a vacation. Quiet nature trails to hike, bike, and explore. Enjoy a boat ride while exploring Sinclair Island. Boaters and water sport enthusiasts enjoy easy water access, calm seas, and shoreside facilities in Port Orchard.
It's neat to see the community coming back out again and loving what we have, because downtown Port Orchard to me is like a hidden gem. Anybody that comes from out of town, the scenery is amazing. There's a lot of amazing businesses that are coming down here, there's activities to do, so it's neat to see how Port Orchard is coming alive again.
There's something for everyone.
Conveniently located in the heart of Puget Sound on the Kitsap Peninsula between Seattle, Tacoma, and the Olympic National Park, where homes fill idyllic neighborhoods, where neighbors are friends. Port Orchard is surrounded by water and offers a change of pace for nearby urban cities, close enough but still far away. Ferries can shuttle you quickly and conveniently to Seattle or to Bremerton, and nearby highways take you to the Olympics or short trips to Tacoma. The South Kitsap School District's vision is to nurture growth, inspire achievement, and build community. Port Orchard is for families with neighborhood parks and a downtown where people of all ages meet. Port Orchard is clean. Port Orchard is growing, and it's thriving. A community that cares about each other and beams with pride.
One of the things that really stands out about Port Orchard and Kitsap County as a whole is our support for the military. You look at the top two employers in Kitsap County, it's the Naval Shipyard as well as the Navy. We're also driving distance to Joint Base Lewis and Court, so we have a strong military foundation here in Kitsap County, and that also carries over the kinds of families and the kind of community feel that we have.
Port Orchard is small-town charm and friendly people and a fit for your lifestyle. So, come join us in Port Orchard, a great place to live. There's something for everyone.
Do they go up?
They're on, we can, I think I've sent the links to all of you. If you, if all of you, I know the committee has had them, Economic Development Committee, the others, you want to look at them again before we put them up, or Jay's saying put them up, so.
Pretty much.
I just hope that people's PCs have better color resolution than our projector.
Yeah, our audio and visual equipment is dated. We have a TV in the back that it would have worked much better on, I've actually played it on that, and you're right, it does have much better resolution. Thank you for the help of Brandy and Economic Development Committee, that I'm very satisfied with what we're together, so. With that, and I think, Brandy, it looks like we'll put them up on our website and share them with the Chamber of Commerce and Kita, I would imagine, too, so.
And we'll send it to Visit Kitsap as well.
Kitsap, there we go. Yep, I forgot about that one. Okay, perfect. So, we're on to our last discussion item, which is the draft interlocal agreement with the Public Facilities District for the. So we're on to our last discussion item, which is the draft inter-local agreement with the Public Facilities District for the community center funding. And I took this, this item to the Economic Development Committee yesterday morning. The first, the colorful document is the draft ILA, that hasn't changed at all since yesterday morning. And I'm not expecting you guys to read all of this tonight, I have two weeks from tonight to, before I'm going to be before the PFD. I do intend, though, to send tomorrow morning this draft agreement to the Public Facilities District Attorney. I imagine it's going to bounce back and forth a couple of times. You can see where we've modified it significantly. They're, this is modeled after the agreement they did for the racetrack. And they didn't intend it to be a commitment, a commitment for all of the funds. They intended to be an agreement that allowed for a feasibility study and nothing more. I've spoke at the Public Facilities District meeting. They shouldn't be surprised to see these edits, because I told them that's what our ask is, is for a phased approach to this. And then the second document, which is Attachment B, which is our document that Nick Bond and I and Sharon have been working on. The only changes to this, what was seen yesterday morning, is the Economic Development Committee is the work that I did this morning, I thought it was. Dirt days are blurring together. On Task Six, which is the financing alternative. We're proposing that the PFD, if they, what we've learned in this process is the PFD's bond rate is not as good as the city's or the county's. And that we're proposing that they pledge their cash flow. That way they can put more money to work and take advantage of our bonding, ours or the county's bonding capabilities. We're not, I'm very purposely vague when I refer to, it's a borrower. I'm not saying it's us, I'm not saying it's the county or the port. And it could be any one of those entities. On paper, we have three partners. And right now, we're doing a lion's share of the work as this, we get the feasibility study done. I hope to see our other two partners become much more active in this process. And otherwise, it's not probably a partnership, so more to come on that. But feel free to get me your thoughts on this, would you like it on the work study next week? Or you have comments at this time?
Yeah, I just had one question, I had a chance to read it earlier this evening, under 5.7, just looking at the attachment.
And that's on the ILA, 5.7?
Yeah, 5.7, just seems like a lot of work, is 30 days realistic to put a wrap-up on this? Or should we maybe extend that to 60 days?
Do you have a problem with 60 days?
I just want to set expectations accordingly, that's a lot of work to be done and a short amount of time to pile that together and report back.
I will gladly amend that. You're probably correct. Although I'd like to get it done in 30 days.
And we can.
And we still can, that's true. All right, other comments from the DIAS, if not, get me your comments, you know, in writing, would be great.
I will just say what I said yesterday at the Economic Development Meeting. And I appreciate 30 days is probably too short a time, you know, too quick an expectation. 60 days seems more reasonable. But it's been my observation that the Public Facilities District is not particularly time-sensitive. And so I think that if we don't put a date in there or even extended it to 90 days, I would, I would encourage the work to get done.
Oh sure, absolutely.
Observations, and that's really what this is about and why we're trying to get an all-encompassing agreement. Is that the bank is looking, to commit to the master plan project, the bank is looking for a commitment from the PFD. And a feasibility study in itself, a standalone feasibility study is not sufficient to move the needle for the bank. Okay, so with that, I'm just making notes here.
Mary, you said the next meeting for PFD was on 23rd, correct?
It is, two weeks from yesterday, yes. Two weeks, it's on a Monday, and it's in Bremerton, Bremerton Council Chambers. So any of you wish to attend, I'd glad, I'd appreciate your support there. I tend to be there to talk about this ferry agreement.
6:30?
I believe so, yes, let me, September 23rd. 5:30.
Oh, 5:30.
According to my calendar. Just a short ferry ride away.
That's right.
Okay, we are, with that, we're on to our council committees. And Councilmember McLaughlin's gone this evening, but I know, and our schedule says that the next finance committee meeting is, was tonight, and that is not true. We canceled that, and the next meeting is October 8th. Clerk Reinersen, if you could note that on the future agendas. And it will be 5:30 here at, or 5 o'clock, I believe, here at City Hall. Economic Development Tourism met yesterday, Councilmember Ashby, you want to give a report?
We did, we met yesterday and much of what we talked about was on the agenda tonight. We had an update about the community center, which the mayor just provided you that same documentation. We, Clerk Reinersen gave us an update on the Lodging Tax Committee. And in the consent agenda, we changed membership in that, we talked about that yesterday. And I believe the applications for the YALTA closed yesterday. And the clerk was assuming or thinking we were going to get nine applications?
We got 13, not yet.
Oh, we got 13, how good. And Councilman Rose Pepe will take over at that point. We also had a discussion about the public outreach and education that we will be doing in coordination with the county on our single plastic bag reduction ordinance. Now that we passed the ordinance, we want to make sure that we educate and inform the business community as well as the citizens of the changes it'll be taking first January. So we reviewed the schedule that the county's doing. And then I brought up an item which we will discuss as a council, probably at a retreat. But I would like to see our, the city's transportation needs, either have an ad hoc committee or be signed to a council committee or be part of a retreat. I just, I just feel that there's a lot in transportation and it doesn't have a committee that looks at it on a regular basis. So basically, that was our meeting, and we will be meeting again the second Monday of October. We're still good for Monday in October, are we not? Okay, 9:30 here in council chambers.
Okay, we're to the utility committee?
Yes, we are, we will be meeting September 23rd here at 9:30 a.m. And the sewer advisory committee is November 6th here at 6:30 p.m.
I'm not sure, did land use meet since our last?
We did.
Okay.
Yeah, we met August 26th. Chairman Deener, I think, was going to give the report tonight, I didn't realize he was not here. So Fred, were you prepared to speak to that lengthy agenda? I've got it all in a file, I did not bring it. So perhaps Deener could fill us in at the next meeting when he was present. But we did meet on the 26th, robust agenda, and our next meeting is indeed scheduled for September 23rd at 9:30 a.m.
So I have a conflict, I will be at the land use but not utilities, since utilities was changed to land uses.
They're scheduled at the same time.
Okay, we'll reconvene and we'll, we'll get a date set.
All right. The Lodging Tax Advisory.
We're moving forward, we'll have a date here in the next couple of days.
Perfect. Festival of Chimes and Lights?
Yes, we're meeting next week on Monday, 3:30 p.m. here at City Hall.
Wonderful, and you've heard your chimes?
Yes!
Okay, it's in my mayor's report.
I love the chimes.
Outside agencies haven't met, they took, oh yeah, we did, we just had, just last week. Let's see, transit, I can't think of anything, purchase buses, transit. KRCC, there's a proposal to bring the Port of Kingston into KRCC. And what, how does that affect other ports and other, was it governmental agencies, the smaller agencies?
Right, the smaller agencies, and as you all remember, KRCC this last year went through quite extensive deliberations on the voting method when the city of Bremerton came back in. And now the city, or the Port of Kingston wants to join us as a voting member. So there are just some details that we're working out that require policy changes. But I believe most of the members were supportive of having the port join.
Whether or not they were going to be a voting member or not, it was really.
Right, and some of the smaller jurisdictions, they were putting some parameters around it that they would, the port would need to be in an urban growth area and perhaps a high-transit community or something, so that, because there are 15 ports in the county. So that would, you know.
Would they be paying dues as well?
Well, it would depend on how they wanted to come in, that's why we needed some parameters with it. The other thing as far as KRCC, I believe you all should have received your invitation to the legislative reception on November 14th. And then KRCC itself, the board members are having a retreat on October 25th, which we're hoping our public works and community development directors can attend.
And I made, I made them aware of it.
Oh, okay. And then I'll just continue with PSRC's Transpaul. We're meeting tomorrow, we always meet the second Thursday of the month. But as part of the next funding cycle for federal transportation dollars, we will have a second meeting, and we'll meet through the end of the year for the criteria for the project selections. And we'll work on, on the criteria with that. And I believe this time we will have the added task of defining hardship since Port Orchard, the additional 1.3 million we got through PSRC had kind of been defined as a hardship situation. So I think that we will be putting some definition around that in the project selection task force or eliminating it altogether. I'm not sure what that will look like, but, yeah, yeah. And the members from the Kitsap delegation are myself, Rob Gelder, and Mayor Becky Erickson from Paulsburg.
And I sit on the Growth Management Policy Board at Puget Sound Regional Council. And we spent our meeting last week taking, sitting through the public hearing on the 2050 vision and the policies related to that, so. That's it for committee reports, I've got mayor's report. So next week is our work study on September 17th. Items will include the puppy mill discussion that you added, asked to be added to that meeting. A recap of the history and actions related to the Bay Street path. Staff is working on large maps that we do display at the meeting, as well as a detailed timeline. The third item that's been added will be changes to our, the speed limits, or proposed changes to our speed limits in the city. Particularly out there, I know one of them is out towards Old Clifton, towards McCormick Woods. Whether we want to change the speed limit out there. So finance direct, I've got a letter here a week or so ago, that Finance Director Crocker was recognized by the Washington State Finance Officers Association with a Professional Finance Officers Award. This is, this award requires ongoing education and professional excellence. And Mr. Crocker's received this award 13 times, so that's quite an achievement. And if you've been around City Hall in the last couple of weeks, the chimes are functioning. So thank you, Tony Lang and your staff for finally getting the equipment functioning. We're not, I just didn't think public work should pick the music. So I'm thinking we need a, an ad hoc committee possibly, Cindy. And I've got a number of citizens that live right around City Hall that have volunteered. Probably the biggest, you know, we haven't had the chimes for a couple of years almost. And the biggest adjustment where people are questioning whether or not we need the quarter hour, whether hourly and the half hour is sufficient. Some folks questioned the volume, and actually, I'm, my backyard is at the same level as the tower. And I can assure you, it's not as loud as it was before, but I think it's loud enough. We can hear it quite well. So anyway, I'd like to, with your consent, Councilmember Luke O'Reilly is volunteering. Anybody else from the council want to pick music that comes? So noon and 5 is when it, it plays a song historically, and that's by ordinance. And I'm sure Councilmember Luke O'Reilly also wants to pick some Christmas music, too, for Chimes and Lights. So we'll be able to play that, so. All right, I observed something here recently, maybe Tony Lang can come to the microphone and tell us who it is that brought these skills to the city. But historically, we've jackhammered panels out. And this summer, I've noticed that a number of the guy, in a couple, number of locations, were attaching mollies to these panels and were lifting them out. And so what are you guys doing differently and?
So instead of actually demoing the whole concrete panel, we're actually utilizing the equipment and putting eye bolts into certain panels and just lifting it out, removing the roots, and smoothing it out and putting it back. Instead of actually demoing, bringing in a mud truck and reporing. So it's actually time-effective as well as costly, saving a lot of money, so.
So which one of the new hires brought that skillset?
Uh, Tom, Thomas Lovely.
Thomas Lovely, okay.
And it worked really well. We had tried it before without doing eye bolts through it. And, you know, he just grabbed it with the bucket, but with, with the eye bolts has actually worked out very well.
We're on shroof and I saw it on Bay Street.
Yeah, we'll do it where we can, I mean, obviously, some panels are beyond repair, so we'll have to repour. But if we can, we'll do it that method, for sure.
It was innovative. So I got a notification from AWC and also from our lobbyist. A number of cities are, and the AWC sent me draft language, are passing a resolution against Initiative 67, 976, which is the Hyman Initiative. Would you like to see that at a, at a work study? Or maybe as a discussion item at a future council meeting? It is part of our funding for Tremont is the car tabs that we have, so. Whether you want to entertain that or not, so maybe I'll add it to the, two weeks from tonight is, is a discussion item. So I think you can find that draft language in my email from AWC, Brandy. And then I heard Councilmember Ashby already talk about the KRCC legislative reception, November 14th, 6 to 9 p.m. at the Silverdale Beach Hotel, so that's all I've got. We are to department heads, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Mark, that doesn't normally happen. I'll keep my comments real brief since I haven't been here for a while. I just want to give you a little insight of what we've been working on in the Finance Department. We've been focusing on our accounts payable processes and really leaning them up. So we've been improving our processes and working towards a weekly process. If you recall, we were always targeted towards a council meeting. And last year, we adopted a policy dispersment, dispersment of funds policy that the council approved, allowing us to target our accounts payable process towards our business needs as a city. So you'll see this going forward, that we're going to be on a weekly process. It creates a lot of efficiencies in our department, also helps us to get payments out on a more timely manner. If you noticed in your packet tonight, you had three separate accounts payable packets. Since our last meeting, we had three separate different check runs, all at about $300,000 per check run. Had we not have those policies in place, had we not been working towards a weekly process, we would have had to withhold all that money and all those payments for a good month's. And we've released it after tonight's meeting. So you can start to see some of the benefits on the business side of us actually improving our processes, streamlining what we can do, and then again, payments out on time. So that's been a really great thing that staff have been working really hard on, and we're going to continue to work through that. The other news that we want to talk about is we've begun the mid-biennial review process, which started off by asking our departments to review their budgets to focus on three specific things. Again, when we're canvassing in the Finance Department. Again, what we're canvassing in the finance department is are there changes that would reduce expenditures? Are there any major increases to your current budgeted expenditures? And then are there any modifications or requests that are mission critical, are unforeseen major expenditures, or things that we identified early on in the budget process that we want to talk about in the mid-year review? So we're having our departments focus on three specific things. Again, and this is not a new budget process, it's a review. So it's how are we doing, how are we performing, anything mission critical that we need to talk about, how are revenues performing? So we are conducting that process right now and we will continue to bring that forward over the next couple of months after the mayor and I have met and kind of brought that forward probably in October study session. We'll probably target that. The last piece is, I hope you guys have been receiving our monthly budget reports. I'm hoping, I'm hoping you find those useful. So until we get to our major review, mid-year review process, please keep looking for those monthly budget reports. We're trying to really hone in on a clear message about what's going on with the state of city on a monthly basis for council and department heads and staff.
Thank you, Mr. Crocker. Sharon?
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Tony, you have any words of wisdom for us?
Nothing tonight.
All right. And Clerk Reinsen?
Just a reminder that if the council members are going to the KRCC legislative reception to reach out to the clerk's office and we'll get you registered and keep track of the quorum noticing. And then just a few things that you'll be seeing from our, from the clerk's office is the Kitsap Humane Society contract's up for renewal, so we'll be negotiating with them and, and with the mayor and we'll be bringing forth an agreement for you guys to review and, and hopefully approve. The other item was working hopefully with the mayor and Councilmember Lucarelli because I believe we're going to be the staff to the ad hoc chimes committee. So I'm sure the mayor will reach out to Councilmember Lucarelli and figure out what we need to do from there.
Three people in the community too that want to serve on that committee, so we have a nice group. Wonderful.
So that's all I have.
All right, we're to our second citizen comment period. Wishing to address the council, please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Randy Jones. I own venture charters. I've been a citizen and homeowner in this town since 1978. I've been a business owner paying taxes to this town since 1997. Several years ago, when this pathway was started, Beck Ashby voted to take my home to use eminent domain when all the other councilmen's did not vote for eminent domain, voted not to use eminent domain. Ashby was the one holdout. Since then, I have lost hundreds of nights of sleep, countless hours thinking about it, dreaming about it, night terrors. My neighbors, Ocean and Arlene gave up on their home. Arlene came here and cried in front of you, Ashby. We, we love our homes. John has been there for over 20 years. After that vote, you told one of your friends, "It looks like I'm not going to get my pathway." Shame on you, you're a disgrace.
Show some respect, sir. I won't, I won't put up with that at this meeting. Mr. John.
That is just fine. I am entitled to my opinion.
Respectfully, you are.
Correct. And the other thing I would like the city clerk, would you please see if this council has ever taken a vote on eminent domain? Because I do not believe we have.
You did at that meeting.
I do not believe we have.
You said you weren't going to vote for it. We have been terrorized. We can't sell our homes because we don't know what's going to happen. And since then, the city has spent $8,000 on each of the homes on appraisals, two separate appraisals. And never for the record have they ever offered any of us money for our home, only that they wanted to take it, leaving it up in the air. Passau gave up, the first house gave up. I urge the people of this town to start a write-in campaign against Beck, Beck Ashby's reelection. I don't care who it is. I don't even care if it's me. I don't want to do it, but I will. And Mr. Dorsey, you sat there.
Mr. Jones, stop directing your comments at individuals.
Okay. I was told, I was told, give me more time then, because I was told that mitigation was not a factor in purchasing our homes.
Mr. Jones, your time is up this evening.
You, you interrupted my time.
Mr. Jones.
To talk about mitigation. That's okay, I'll be at the next meeting and everyone since. Thank you, Ms. Ashby, for all the night.
Mr. Jones, please sit down.
Nights lost.
Others wishing to address the council this evening? Please step to the microphone and identify yourself.
My name is Dorothy Ackles. I would like to address the city council. Oh, okay, I'm short. Okay, my name is Dorothy Ackles. I would like to address the city council members about the proposed pedestrian bike trail through Annapolis and how it will affect the area. I have lived here since 1970. I have taught in the South Kitsap School District for 34 years. I still substitute occasionally. My two daughters and son-in-laws attended our schools, my grandsons also. It is such a pleasure to, to run into my students when I see them around Port Orchard. They either live here or they like to visit. It's a good place to raise kids. That said, I would like the city council to consider the effects of their decision on the neighbors, the businesses, and the jobs in Annapolis. I will, I will use Whiskey Gulch as an example. It is an attractive addition to the area and employs between 25 to 30 people. It was started by a former student of mine, Robert McGee, also my son-in-law, and wife Christie, who started Annapolis Fitness. Mr. McGee is a visionary. He saw an old neglected building and thought, "What a perfect venue for a nice restaurant in Port Orchard." He bought the building and renovated it. This is an example of local residents investing in their community. It is a gathering place for events and reunions. This week, this is the second time that they're hosting an event honoring our legendary football coach, Ed Fisher. So he's in town. There are also other businesses and homes being impacted by your decision. Port Orchard can find, Gig Harbor has detoured their trail away from businesses and homes. Port Orchard can find a way. Perhaps a marked walking trail would be sufficient. No need for a wide bike path for such a short distance. To what purpose? Do not use eminent domain to take away homes, yards, businesses, or parking. Let's work together for the good of the community and for all those involved. That is what this is all about. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to address the council this evening? Please identify yourself for the record.
Yes, mayor council members, I'm Kathleen Fritsch and I'd like to speak about the bike walking path also. I live in the Annapolis area and I'm an avid user in the past of the Annapolis Fitness Gym when it was located above Whiskey Gulch. I utilize Whiskey Gulch and I'm still a gym member and I also get my hair cut at the proper. I would like to have quite a bit more information than we have. I'm very concerned about, I utilize, by the way, I walk and use the bike path nearly every day. I go downtown, I go up and around Annapolis where I'm, I'm cautious because of safety reasons and I continue on and so I do utilize it as a walker. But I am concerned that forcing through issues using eminent domain will compromise the economic development and the well-being of the citizens of Port Orchard. I would like to know, as you brought up previously, Madam Councilmember, whether there have been council votes, whether there have been community consultations? I would like to know what the strategic plan has been historically and in the future and also the financial status of the project and whether the economic development committees and the land use committees have had opportunities to also discuss and analyze this matter. I think it's imperative to grow as a community, to have recreation and exercise opportunities that are available to all, but without compromising economic and household development and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to address the council this evening?
Hello. My name is Rob Reynolds. I'm here to express my concerns.
Raise that microphone up just a little bit, we'll pick you up better.
With the bike path. I know a few of you, Mayor Rob, Fred, Jay, we've met, although I don't expect you to So as I said, I'm a homeowner here in downtown Port Orchard. My story in 30 seconds. I grew up in Kitsap County. My career path led me to Seattle. As soon as I could, 20 years ago, I moved to Seattle, vowed I'd never live in Kitsap again. You know, life is just too short for two-hour-plus commute a day. So fast forward 16 years ago, or 16 years advanced, four years ago, my wife and I, two daughters, a promise of a fast ferry, we decided to relocate back to Port Orchard. We've invested in our home as our forever home. We're invested in the schools, although it pales, our contribution pales in that respect to, sorry, those that Robert and Christie have made. We're invested in the church. And again, it pales our investment compared to those that Chuck have made. One of the things that makes Port Orchard special to us is Annapolis. It's a microcosm of West Seattle where we used to live. One of the things that made West Seattle so great was the eclectic collection of the different communities. And we have that here in Port Orchard. We have downtown, we have McCormick, we have Southworth, we have Manchester, and we have Initially, I'm all for a bike path. It sounds great. But I don't want that at, if it has anything but a positive impact on the businesses in Annapolis. Bike path has two primary aspects in my view. One is recreational and one is for our commuters. The recreational aspect, it would be a sad outcome if the path leads to a community bankrupt of its coffee shops, its restaurants, its barber shops. What make it so special? From a commuting aspect, as a former avid bike commuter, I see the, the bike path as having limited use. And I say that because, one, most of our season here is in the dark, it's cold, and it's wet. Having been hit by a car on Sydney Avenue, I've given up on, I've just decided commuting by bike is not worth it. What would serve most commuters better would be a dedicated shuttle between the two ferry terminals for shipyard and Seattle commuters alike. If we could leverage the ferry system we have by allowing a choice of either, you could, you could go to one and return to either one. The return trip's the tough one. So I'm just here to ask that the cries from the businesses in Annapolis are heard. We're all on the same team here.
Wrap your comments up if you could.
Okay. Just please hear them, listen to them, let's be transparent about the process, what we're doing, and let's work on, our goal is to come out with something that's best for the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to address the council this evening?
Robert McGee, 2065 Bay Street. You know, I know a lot of you guys and I know this has been a negative thing thus far and, and I hate that just as much as you guys do. Some of you I consider friends. With that said, you know, some things have to be said and we have to defend ourselves and, and we hate to be in that position. We want to work with you, but you've been silent in that regard and it's been very, very difficult. Per your request, we did submit a formal proposal to meet with council and the mayor last week. To date, we haven't received a response. In 2014, the city council did vote to not utilize eminent domain. Five of the current council were on that and some voted for it and one didn't. So my question is, you know, what steps did you take over the last five years? What did you do to honor that commitment? You had five years, you know, why did you decide to sit on this till the ninth hour? Why did you keep the community in the dark these last five years and what you were doing? In five years' time, you could have easily found a way to do this and honor your commitment to the community. You had five years to put the community first. You failed. You kept it quiet, what in hopes it would be swept under the rug and hopes the community wouldn't do anything and ambush him at the last minute? Well, we saw through that and we're standing up for ourselves. My God, I can only hope that wasn't the plan, honestly. And now we've given you an opportunity to honor that commitment. Have some integrity and nothing still. We've been treated poorly. The conduct of the city staff has been poor in our opinion. And there's just been complete disregard to communicate productively with us. Zero. We're, we're pretty smart people. We really are. We'd love to work with you and find some solutions if you'd just listen and work with us directly. We're your community, we're your people. We elected you to represent us, not developers, not special interest money, and it's out there and the community sees it and you all know where it's at. We all do. Your community's got a trust issue right now. I hate that. I want elected people that we elect. You're supposed to represent our views, our ideology. We want to trust you. But here's the deal. You have a unique opportunity right now, if you take it and you grasp it and you take hold of it like you care. You have the opportunity to save the Annapolis District, save face with your community, look like a council and a mayoralship that cares about the community. I'm glad you're bringing in development. I do, I've said it before, I'm a contractor, I love it, but not at the expense and not on the backs of the very people who put you here. It's your job to represent them first. All of them, not just Whiskey Gulch, this isn't no Whiskey Gulch thing. This is an Annapolis community thing. You did a fantastic job downtown, but we're kind of winding up short on the stick here.
Wrap your comments up, please.
I will. So I just want to urge you, work with us. I hate the negativity. I like you people, but you're making it very hard for me to do that. Just one quick point. The community desperately wants elects they can trust, elects with integrity to the people and elects who put their community first. Please, for the love of God, put your community first. The rest will fall into place if you do what's right.
Wrap your comments up. Wishing to address the council this evening?
Chuck Huck, one of the owners of Whiskey Gulch. I'm, I'm just going to make this super brief. We've talked about all this. I mean, we, there was a vote in 2014, it's on record. It's a shame that you actually don't know that, it's actually a little embarrassing. But at the same time, you guys have to do the right thing here. I mean, this is, you guys have to know, I mean, a lot of you I've talked to a little bit, I mean, you guys aren't bad people. I mean, in 2014, when you voted against eminent domain, one of the things that was said on record was, "We do not take people's homes." On record, you can look it up. That's the kind of government I want to go and look up to and that's the kind of government I trust. And unfortunately, since then, there's been so little transparency and all this has just been thrown at people. What's happened since 2014? What's, what changed? What changed in you guys? Anything? I mean, it's.
Public comment period, Mr. Huck.
Yeah, no, I'm just, it's a statement. What changed with our government? I'm going to leave you with this. So every Tuesday morning, we go and we have a group of unbelievable, unbelievable people. They're all about the community. You guys know who the group is, I'm not going to say the name of them, but they practice fourth truths and they live by it and they've been around for a long, long time. fourth truths and they live by it and they've been around for a long, long time. And I believe if this community and this government and the people lived by these four truths, we would have one heck of a community. These four truths are, one, is it the truth? Two, is it fair to all concerned? Is it fair to all concerned? Three, will it build goodwill and better friendships? I don't know about you guys, but this has caused a divide. This has not built any goodwill or friendships. And four, will it be beneficial to all concerned? I think it's fairly obvious that this isn't beneficial to all concerned. So once again, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it and I trust that you guys are going to do the right thing. I have to. For the 30 staff members that I promised that I'd fight for. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to address the council this evening? Sure, go ahead.
I'm back. This really has bothered me since the people that were on the stilted houses came in and the idea that a bike path would be more important than people's homes and that, when Randy was here years ago talking about this and the other people. And if I remember correctly, this was presented to the community as a walking path and somewhere it got changed to a bike path. And I don't think that that got out to a lot of the community. So it's a communication issue. And then when Randy's group came in, to me, the city is losing a tourist attraction. What brings the people in the boats into the community? It's the novelty things. I know a lot of people want to see all of downtown just flattened and modular type places in 15 feet, go 15 feet and jut in and out. But I don't know friends that go to those places. They go to Kingston, they go to Gig Harbor, they go to, you know, cute quaint little places. We had people here that talked about, they'd be out in their boat and go by these five homes out there and would talk with the people sitting out on their decks. That was a tourist attraction because it, the people thought it was neat that they would take the time to communicate with them. These are things that you're wanting to destroy and it shouldn't happen over a bike path. Now, it started out as a walking path. Why can't it end? And I know it's federal funds, but somehow there's got to be a way to go in and say, "Hey, we're getting, it was changed and we need to, we didn't communicate this." And I guess if you have to pay it back, maybe that's what this community has to do. And you learn that everybody that's involved in a project needs to know everything upfront and you make sure that everybody knows it. Because it wasn't upfront and that's the problem here. Because it got changed in the middle of the planning of it somehow. Because everybody thought it was a walking path to begin with and the next thing we know it's a bike path. And that made a big difference. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Lenore Rubish. I watched your videos today and they're beautiful and they-
What's your name?
Lenore Rubish.
Thank you.
And they show Port Orchard, they show a beautiful side of Port Orchard. And in there you talked about promoting businesses, a place for families, growth and all these wonderful things. But here we are fighting to keep amazing businesses, fighting to keep beautiful homes, trying to promote growth within this small area of Annapolis. Your videos say you're promoting that, but your actions are not proving that to be the truth.
Thank you for your comments. Thinking to address the council this evening? Last chance? Okay, our meeting is adjourned.